So it would be seven o'clock, I'll open the meeting. We have no nails, a couple of bills. We have Jane's payroll and the amount of eight hundred and fourteen is seventy, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents. And we have payroll for Bill Scanlon for, for five thousand ten, four hundred. It's always disappointing. So we have the rain permit, there was a little issue with the, the plan, do you think?
My name is Andy Bond from Sub and Engineering, I'm the member of the engineer on the project. So much of the site plan review process, I'm here with Dave Henderson, he's from RP Masiallo who's a general contractor that's doing the, that's overseeing all the work for the renovations of the building and the site. At the initiation of the project, which I'm sure everyone's aware of, there was a portion of this, and this is a blow up of your plans by the way, I just thought it might be more legible for presentation purposes. Orient yourself, this is Trolley Crossing Road here, Putnam Road south here, the first bank, get the name of it.
Webster First.
Webster First, right there. That's right, you work there. So this area here was intended to stay in its existing state of, it was fairly dense, underbrush growth with some pine trees growing through it and made it a nice existing buffer. Unfortunately, initial phase of that project, that water area was cleared and hence we're here to try to present a plant amendment, a site plan amendment. To propose some planting to replace what area hasn't taken. Our approach has been, it had been cleared up, there's an existing chain link fence right along Putnam Mill, I'm sorry, Putnam Road south. If you remember, there was a fence that came down here that was removed, it was cleared approximately twenty feet beyond where that fence was, so tried to collect that as best it could on this plan. The area had been cut but not stumped or rubbed, correct. So when the owner realized the error immediately and any further work in this area had ceased. And we spoke with Bill and tried to enact this plan. So what we've, what we're showing to you now, and the wall has been constructed and the grading been done here. Remember, there was a lot of discussion about how this screening effect would work. So that wall's been installed, so you can see how that grading's gonna look and the fence is gonna be on top of that along with the street trees. Actually, thought it looked pretty good. But what we wanted to focus on here is from the edge of pavement, which isn't shown on this particular plan, this is just a street line, to the fence line, that vegetation is untouched. So if you go out there today, you'll see that that vegetation is in its unaltered state. What we're proposing is the, I'm sorry, yeah, I apologize, I didn't tip ring photograph it because driven by it or seen it.
Do you all have a handout from the builder question on that project?
Yep. So if you remember on the original plan, we had some abrevieties behind the wall to try to anchor that end corner. And then we had originally spec'd about four white pine trees to take care of some sparse areas that were on this slope. What we're proposing now is a blend of white pines and fir trees. Again, natural native species spaced at twenty feet on center, so as they grow their canopy will get the white pine canopy up and above. And you'll have the fir trees interspersed in between it, alternating twenty feet on center. So this dash line here is your forty foot setback line from the street line. So I tried to mimic that setback area for the heavy planting. In discussion with Hydrograss who helped us generate this plan, we discussed, and I put a note on the plan, that this, we'll intersperse these along with the stumps. We're not intending to grub the area and clear it. The intent is to plant the trees as necessary and then allow the natural occurring vegetation that's been there to come up behind it. Just stabilize the slope with some wood chips. So I envision this with these folks as just to start the conversation, what we'd like to see and get, and get this approved so that they can do what? Any questions? I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at the plan.
Andy, that being sort of landscape, can you describe the effect of the pine trees and whether you'd be able to see through those or whether the fir trees will sort of provide some mitigation?
So, yeah. Again, back to the site plan review, there was a lot of concern about visual effect, particularly from Trolley Crossing as well as people traversing down Putnam Road south. So rather than interspersing with deciduous trees that lose their leaf cover every, every winter or season, we chose to go with white pines. Again, those are dense, you'll see them when they're initially planted, they're gonna be taller, two feet taller than I am, and they're gonna have the shape to them. They're native white pine, they're not, not a adjusted species, so they will start to grow up rather quickly. They'll accelerate two to three feet a year and you'll start getting or developing a canopy with time. The fir trees are interspersed, again, it's a very thick plant, again, with the intent of screening people. So you can see on that, we tried to alternate them so that you've got two trees here, you've got one behind it. The other concern, there is a slope there, so I wanted to have some trees that grew up, not necessarily out, so that the people traversing it would get that effect as soon as possible with growth. So that was kind of our idea in presenting this to you folks. I didn't want to plant it with abrevieties every ten feet, I thought that wouldn't look very naturally occurring in this particular area, the native species.
Is the fence now extended all the, all the way down? Because I know we had vinyl fence on the side of it and now we are doing the vinyl all the way to the end or?
So I, for this iteration, I left this with the chain link fence here. If you were to drive out there today, the purpose of the vinyl fence here, you do get good screening on that because it's elevated in relationship to the road. This road, the edge of pavement drops off pretty substantially here. So removing more vegetation to put a fence back in seemed to be counterproductive.
What does that elevation of the road compare to the?
Um, it varies here, you're about five to six feet higher than the pavement. So this right here gray is the existing edge of pavement on site. I don't, it wasn't necessary when did this plan, but the edge of pavement's in here. So it's about five to six feet vertical change here. As you get, I think the worst spot is right about off the storage, I would guess I'd say it's close to twenty feet.
Changing height?
Yeah.
So your eight foot, six foot trees aren't gonna do much to shield traffic from coming?
Not initially, you're gonna have to wait for them to grow.
So it's gonna be years?
Years and not at all, because you're just gonna get the top of the peaks at twenty feet, so you're not gonna get that spacing that you would think.
Correct. You know, but it takes time, I mean, this is pretty tight, tall pine trees.
I mean, originally we, we were good with the fence only going partially around because of all that screening. And I mean, you did, you saw all the concern of?
Yes.
So we, we get that, but now we lose all that screening and pretty much all we have is, you know, the open. I would really prefer a fence, even if we give up a little bit of that, of the planting.
Oh, I think you should get, I think the planting should be there too.
Well, we definitely need the plantings because eventually they'll, but I think a fence, because it's gonna take a couple of years before they get full enough to even help out. And that was a big concern at the beginning and, you know, I'm sorry that's a mistake with me, but I feel like we need to have something more to protect. I mean, it's, it's, it's Trolley Crossing, it's supposed to, it's kind of part of the master plan to kind of be beautiful up there, to kind of wait for a couple of years for it to grow and things.
Andy, I got a question. In your opinion, would it be an advantage to shorting the planting from the twenty foot on center to kind of, or is that not beneficial with the species of trees?
Well, you can see the canopy, so if you watch or walk out in the woods today and look at pine trees, they're not by human center.
Correct.
You know, that's why, that's why I stayed away from the abrevieties, like you get that fast vertical fence, but it doesn't look natural. You know, that was an attempt that was done here.
Yep.
And I think, I think it was back here at some point in time, I think when they redid this gravel lot, they planted those abrevieties and they didn't thrive. So that was why I went with that spacing, so that you would get the canopy developing up elevated with time. There may be an advantage to, again, we're trying to get something on the table to talk about, but maybe we make it dense in places that have more visual impact, like for instance, these folks here, that two family.
Because I'm, I'm just only looking at like the photos that were supplied by the inspector.
I know we took them with time, but it's a little deceptive.
Oh yeah, because that's not, this was probably back when it was summer.
That was in June and?
Yeah, and this is now when it's thin and, with all the leaf fall, you can see more. But I mean, I can see what you're talking about with the fence, but I just, I mean, I think that there was a miscommunication on, on site. Because I did have a conversation.
It was a mistake and it happened, but I just wanna make sure that the residents don't, aren't, don't have to look at kind of what they, a mess for a couple of years while the tree grows and, and a small expense of a fence. Compared to years of angry neighbors seems like a, a small, kind of, you know, it's.
What about replacing the chain link fence with a fence that's already gonna be coming around? Because it's so much higher, what you're gonna be able to do is it'll be, that'll be great shield covering because again, as he said, it drops way off, so all that stuff is already gonna be sitting down. You continue that fence all the way around.
The vinyl one that they're already planting.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's, that's. I have a practical problem with that, I'll try to explain it. The first one is, we can't put the fence in the right of way, okay? The slope drops off almost right after the edge of pavement, which is outside of right of way. And then secondly, there's an existing easement that belongs to the town that goes right along here and it actually continues down Putnam Mill Road. So putting, so I got, actually, and then the third practical problem is, if we wanna try to salvage what hasn't been touched, we go to remove the fence and replace the fence, all that will end up being removed.
No fences.
No, the fences.
There's a chain link fence over there.
Yeah, well. So, so there's three pragmatic issues where removing the existing chain link fence and putting it in, so one, we're limited by our ability to put it on the property. Two, there's an easement, so there's impediment, so when the town, I believe it's for water line extension, it was the purpose of the easement. When that happens, who's gonna put the new fence in? So we're trying to keep that vegetation and recognize that fact that we're not gonna cause, cost the town going forward.
Would the board want to have a peer review of this plan by a landscape architect for example, to work if this will come up with a recommendation?
I don't know if that's necessary. I mean, I don't understand why the chain link fence would be replaced with a vinyl.
All the trees are on property lines here, the trees are?
Trees are on, on private property.
Right, and where's the chain link? If this is?
Do you have the site plan in front of you? Calling the photograph?
Yeah, please, I'm sorry.
So is this education in front of the fence?
It is.
Everything else on the other side was?
See, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying that you don't want to take down more, but if you look at, there's really nothing left. There's a couple of vines, so you really, so you, I mean, that's just.
At that point, you're in for a penny and for a pound, you might as well clear it, put up the real fence.
Put up a nice fence and then let everything else grow behind you.
Yep.
And that's, that's my opinion, I just think that, that if, if there was some beautiful trees, something that was more than this thick back there, there is pretty much, it just looks like some brush.
Yeah, I just, I think you're gonna, you're gonna lose the effect of that fence height as you continue farther down Putnam Road.
And that's just it, is how high can that fence go if it's, if it's on the drop? You're still gonna see over the fence.
Yeah, it would physically be where the chain link fence is.
And it would need to be twenty feet high to actually block something, unless, unless it was right where the chain link was.
I was gonna say, if it was right where the chain link fence is, no, because of the drop. But it would have to be there because then it's gonna correct.
Which is right on the edge, which is right on the edge of the slope, top of the slope.
Pardon?
The current fence is right at the top.
It varies depending on where you are. Up here, the intersection is, so if you wanted, you know, we can look in the field and make, make it practical, right, if you extend this area here, take more of that corner effect.
Well, I'm looking here too, which is somewhat across from these houses, which is right here, and that still looks like it's at the top of the slope, we're pretty close to it.
See that rail right there?
Yep.
That's upper rail of the fence, so it's quite a ways down, down the slope from there.
How tall is that fence?
Six feet, I believe.
So the problem, even with a fence, you're gonna see over the fence to, to everything.
Yeah, but in the meantime, at least, at least it'll look decent and not, I mean.
But you're not gonna be shielding any view there, yeah, I agree, it looks better, a new fence would look better than.
It'll match the rest of the fence and make, and make kind of everything.
Now, now what about some, some of the larger species of abrevieties that can almost be a hedge for these poor people that live across the street?
I'm not an expert on all those abrevieties, I know some species are more susceptible to deer consumption than others, and then you end up, you end up with a lollipop effect, it looks like Dr. Seuss.
There are species that are deer resistant.
And I couldn't tell you which one is a taller one versus another, this way, so there may be beneficial to better placement in the field where someone might have more, like I said, these probably are the most sensitive receptors.
Yep.
To the, to the site. Maybe there's an argument to be made to put some, some abrevieties here and put on it this whole run that's thirty two, I don't know, total length, but three hundred feet long.
Phil, you had, you made the recommendation to bring in, in like a landscape person. I mean, honestly, for the cost of bringing in landscapers, the fact, like, they're, they're super expensive and it seems like it actually is a cheaper alternative to make us happy and draw the fence.
Well, the fences are gonna do it though. The fence isn't gonna block that view at all.
If you just look at where the fence is gonna go, you'll, you'll see.
Look at, look at the next.
At least it'll break down that, that, that direct view.
But you'll still be able to see over it and you'll still be able to see the buildings, you'll still be able to see the trucks.
The plains of Dugan, Dugan abrevieties grow extremely high in our deer resistance.
Dujah?
Yeah, but at least the, yeah, so it's. So how far is it, how high?
Those are, those grow to about forty feet, they grow up four to six feet a year. If you plant them four feet, five feet on center, it's a hedge.
What about the?
They're deer resistant and they're drought resistant and they do well.
By making them switch the fence and we overstep, here they, we have an applicant that's already been approved for a site plan.
They made a huge mistake and there was already tons of, the neighbors were really upset.
I totally understand that, I just wanna make sure that we're not.
I think the abreviation might provide better coverage though, of the ones.
So, yeah, did you?
What about a mix? I mean, some of the bigger trees that are taller now.
I just.
And then you can, that'll make a lot. And how many were, we talked of the trees?
Right now, the plan you have in front of you has.
You don't count them?
I think I put a count. Uh, no, there was, there was a count of both of them, if you look on the top. I only thought I had a count.
Yeah, you do.
No, that's just the abrevieties. I wanna say there was twenty-eight trees, if I remember correctly, maybe off by a couple of trees.
So the issue is that, that screening provided a nice natural screening and that, you couldn't see the building. And that's one thing that some people feel better about.
Thirty-three total?
Do we, do we have any?
Thirty-two.
Okay.
Thirty-two, thank you. Not including the, the abrevieties on the, or something.
This isn't a public hearing, so we don't need to do questions, but do, do we have any butters? Do we have butters, do we, do we wanna chime in on somebody who might have a comment? Laurie?
Sorry, I've been speaking with one of the butters. I spent ten and a half years on a visual litigation program for Northeast Utilities, so let's find her to chat in. The white pine have terrible snow load, so while they look beautiful going in when they're shorter and stockier, they don't handle snow, so you're gonna have issues down the road. And then it looks like the root system isn't gonna do very well, you're gonna have to intersperse between what stumps are there. So they're not going to get very big because they're gonna hit the root systems of the plants. So the reason, like, the power line projects use abrevieties is probably, you know, a dozen different kinds, but they would use like green giant abrevieties or, they're really eastern red cedars, so they can handle snow load. So if you're gonna have plenty, I would say it is a good idea to intersperse different kinds. The white pines, just the longevity, it's not.
Yeah, and as the white pines grow, they lose the branches on the bottom, so you've got.
Yeah, and they do, and it's snowstorm, the old ones. But with the fence question, you may not be able to plant and have a successful tree there, but you could put a berm and place the fence on a berm as much as.
Yeah, there is a, without bringing in a, a lot of fill.
Fill.
That's, that's true too, I mean, you'd have to build that up twenty feet by forty feet to get the, enough of a berm there to, to block.
But just so you, you know, and they're good caliber trees, so you're gonna be able to do that most successfully.
I like this abreviation.
I, I do too, but I, I'm thinking maybe, maybe we, we need to consult with a, a landscape architect to peer review this, because I don't think your plan will suit the purpose that, at least not right away, not within the next ten years. That the natural vegetation provided before.
Right, the neighbors were very sensitive, I mean, this wasn't advertised, right, so we don't have, we don't have butters in here because probably not everybody looks at our planning board.
It's on our agenda.
Not everybody, I mean, it's not, you know, there's no like letters going, I mean, as much as people love us, they don't always look at our.
I know the two family was just sold too, so they might not even be in there yet to even know to look.
So I, I just wanna be sensitive because there was a lot of, the butters did have a lot of issues. And, and that's fine, I just would have seen, it's a, it's really truly a part of our master plan that, you know, the village district and, and we just wanna make sure that it's done right. So if, I think we can bring in a consultant if everybody, if the board agrees.
Let me make a motion, we're bringing a landscape consultant to review the trees and.
Okay. Mediations, so, on favor?
Aye. So how would you like us to proceed? We're waiting for comments from the consultant.
Do we have somebody?
Does this, does this affect your work schedule? Can you move it on this?
You're not gonna affect your work schedule, focus on the other.
So it's not gonna slow you down until, maybe, see the next meeting is made first, we have kind of a light agenda, that's next week, so.
I don't think anybody's gonna have anything. Do we have a school?
Then we have the eighth, which is the public hearing, right?
Who's gonna be doing it?
I'll have to find somebody, do you have any?
Can we talk, does Mike have any, um, under?
Yeah, my God, see if he can recommend anybody, I mean, because we can trust him to, you know, get some.
So then the next meeting would be the fifteenth? Sure we get, we get something done by then.
I mean, the eighth, the eighth is our public hearings.
Oh, eighth is a public hearings, okay.
Yep. We could probably have somebody come in and review this.
It's not huge, it, I mean, it shouldn't take weeks to review, this is.
No, no, just get some suggestions, just let them know what we're looking for.
I don't want people to come back to us saying, you let, you let this happen and then you didn't, you didn't do a good enough job of, you know, with the mediation, so. If a professional says that it's gonna look nice and these are the trees that are gonna grow well, then, okay.
You know, I'm just, I'm just concerned that because of the difference in height there, you're gonna have to start with some bigger trees. I mean, the ten foot trees just aren't gonna cut.
And if you plant in between the stumps, you're not gonna be able to do bigger trees, so it's gonna be.
Do you wanna leave the stump, the stumps there?
Well, that was, that was what the recommendation we had.
So the plan was for the stumps to actually start growing up, so.
And that's what they do in the solar found, that's what they do in the solar found, but they do it when you're twenty miles away from the nearest house, so that they can, the stumps can just fill in. Unfortunately, that's not the situation here.
It's the brush, it's just, it's the height there that's the problem, it's, it's just such a change of height and each Putnam Road as you go down there, you look over everything and that's all you see now.
Most landscape engineers, all they're doing, so bring in and we'll.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have a continued public hearing for ZPT Energy Solutions, as far as with, with the subdivision plan, it's Harley Day Road.
Is there anybody here?
Up here.
So would you maybe call, there's a two lot definitive subdivision plan approach for this property. I think it's been acknowledged by the applicant, that it's for purposes of zoning protection for the moratorium. Mike Andrew has done a thorough peer review, I think he did three letters. In his last letter, he pretty much signed off that all of his concerns have been addressed. So I, I don't think there are really any outstanding issues in terms of the, the design or layout of the road. The only question was, we didn't have approval from the owner, which it overlooked, to allow this project to go forward. So we wanted to be sure we had the owner's permission to do this plan. And Doug sent an email today, can Doug work on forward and, and is there anything to do with what you have?
My name is Doug Rady, I'm an attorney about at Chengdua, and I represent the landowner overlook. I am not a representative of the applicant ZPT, but I did want to appear here today to make it clear that for purposes of the subdivision plan only, my client has authorized this to go forward. I don't know if the applicant was intending on appearing today or if this appearance was excused, but I certainly am not here to speak for him, but can I answer any questions that you may have regarding the overlook?
I think that's all we were waiting for, was is that better?
There's no storage issues or like energy storage or anything that we didn't address that's new that we don't want?
This is just a subdivision plan, this is.
No site, no site.
Definitely. And everything, I think, looked great, so.
I make a motion to accept.
Second?
On favor? That's it? It's fine. Thank you. We have to sign.
Do we, do we need to sign this?
Oh.
We don't have the mylar.
Okay.
So we have the mylar.
Sorry, I wanted to. We have Pucci Properties, minor yield adjustment request.
Yes, you have an email from William Pucci, who's the owner and developer of the property. And sort of at the last minute, he got a request in from one of the butters to the, I think, south of this property. And they had requested in lieu of the plantings that were shown and approved by the planning board adjacent to their site, that they would prefer to have a fence. And kind of, it's backward usually, it was saying people would prefer to have landscaping rather than a fence, but in this case, he preferred to have a fence as opposed to the abrevieties that were shown on the plan. So Mr. Pucci would be willing to do that provided it doesn't cause any delays or additional expense to what he's already been approved for. So I told him I would bring it to the planning board for discussion. If you want to allow this to go forward, then I think we'd be up to Mr. Pucci to decide whether to do it or not. Or if you want to bring him in and go through a formal amendment to make that change. I don't think he'd be willing to do that, so that he go forward with, with what's there now.
Did we have a letter from the neighbor?
I was just gonna ask that, just to make sure.
No, I don't, this is the only email that I have.
And how many other neighbors are there?
It's just the, the location, it's just Jennifer's behind them, that's it.
Is this?
This is Pucci property, this is the gymnastics.
Oh, this is, okay, okay.
Right, so.
Okay, okay. This was before my time, so I, I didn't know what property it was.
I don't care, but typically a butters do like the abreviation, so if, if, I don't think he really needs to come in for a modification. But it would be nice to get a quick, even an email from the, from Jennifer Hill to say that's what they want.
Which is the?
Which is the.
I was thinking the same exact thing.
So it's here, on this portion of the site.
Okay, okay.
So these are the ones that he wants, the butter wants to remove and have the fence, but.
He might have seen how well the arborvitae stayed over in the.
It's like there's a long, there's some, probably.
Final fence bill?
A chain one.
I don't know.
Is this a privacy fence or something?
It would be okay, so I don't think it would be chain, I'm sure it would be some kind of a fence.
I would say sh, we should, my personal opinion is that we approve it pending a letter from Juniper stating that this is truly what they want.
Yeah.
Just for the file, not that we don't believe him, but just to cover.
I think the cost and time of having him coming in is, but I just want him to be sure with it, so.
No. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
So is that, is that okay to approve, as long as we get something in writing from?
I would make the motion to approve the, um, change to the fence, provided we get an email or some sort of communication from Juniper for the file stating that that is truly what they want.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
Nice thing.
I'll follow up.
Um, and just so you know, and that's upon the letter.
Yes, yes.
Go to Jameson. Uh, we have the Gunther, um, sixty-one A lot release request.
So, um, this is a site that you're very familiar with. You've worked on this property for many years, many different iterations of plans. Uh, as you may recall, um, the latest iteration was, he rescinded, with the board's permission, he rescinded, he approved open space community plan for the property, and instead submitted, um, reduced front of slots and special permit, which the board approved, and a number of A and R lots. Um, so with that approval in hand, he has a buyer who had banned the several meetings. Um, and since this property is in sixty-one A, this is a formal request to withdraw the, the land from sixty-one A, pay back taxes. Uh, and the town has a hundred and twenty day right of first refusal to decide whether to purchase the property. Uh, in the, uh, the special permit decision, uh, Mr. Gunther, at the request of the Greater Washington Land Trust, committed to providing, preserving about sixty acres of open space, um, in the far back of the property. So we're sort of getting that at no cost, uh, and Greater Washington Land Trust will be the steward of that property. So this is, it's just an advisory, uh, uh, opinion from the planning board, whether you think the town should try to purchase the entire property from Mr. Gunther at the agreed upon, uh, sales price, purchase and sell price that he has with the buyer, uh, or just, you know, to let it go forward, the transaction go forward, without the town taking action.
So we have to go to whether, if we wanna recommend to the selectmen, if they wanna pursue it, is there any?
Does any of the town rec committee or any, anything else look at that as potential recreation area for future ball fields or?
Well, you may recall, there was an issue with the Midstate Trail.
Yep.
It was very important to the town.
Yep.
And we worked that out.
We worked out a deal with them, I know.
Provided some parking and rerouted the trail and.
Well, it was, it was a necessary thing because it was the initial promise, so.
True.
I wouldn't say that anybody gave anybody anything, but, um.
It's just, uh, whether the, the town should buy it or not, I, I don't believe they should, but I'm not sure if there's any, any other committees in town that are looking at that or looking for space for, I don't think it would be a good spot for.
I, I think it's, it's not like a flat ball field, like, I think it's pretty, it's pretty residential.
Yeah, the location.
I think it's perfect for the house lots, 'cause I remember he was doing it beforehand, there's a sign and all that, right, that, so I, I don't think so.
The special, no, the Greater Southern class were very large, some of them were ten acres.
Yeah, no, be, be, beautiful.
A lot of private open space being preserved, but, I mean, nothing about.
I don't think that the, it's. Not next to it.
So there was some work that was supposed to be done on Boucher Way, was that ever completed, started?
Uh, I haven't been up there lately, but we, we have, uh, a commitment from Mr. Gunther to make those improvements, that's, we locate the utility holes, replant the trees, you know, fix the storm drainings system at the bottom of the road.
We haven't heard anything from any of the neighbors complaining or anything.
No.
Anybody complain at, on, on Hornsings?
On Homestead.
On, on Homestead? Any complaints there from people that?
No. We never got any, any complaints from Hornssted folks.
Do we have to make a motion not to recommend, or do we?
I think the selectmen would like to hear a formal complaint.
We have a motion to.
Motion not to recommend a buyer.
Second?
On paper?
Aye.
Abstain.
So we have the discussion, the planning director's position. So, um, pleased to announce that, uh, Mr. Benson decided to, um, take a position. He countered with a eighty-five thousand, um, which is very reasonable for the amount of experience that he has. We have the letter written up, if anyone wants to, I'll, I'll sign it as chair, but if any, if, if you want. I think I need to sign, I'll sign the right place this time.
That's right.
Yeah.
We'll get it after me.
So it's exciting, um. And what was the start date again, was it June?
June third of the, so.
Which is the Monday, right?
It is the Monday.
And I'd be happy to do a transition when he starts, spend a day or two with him, get him up to speed on what's going on.
Thank you.
Sure, we're all even, recording records are.
General of the Striders?
Jay has them.
Do we need to make a motion of course in the letter to him, or is it just a dispute?
That is the letter.
Right, okay.
But we do need a motion for the minimum.
G three.
Okay, okay.
The minimum, so. I make a motion, um, to hold the salary to be at eighty-five.
Second?
And everything else approved or not?
On paper?
Aye.
Yeah, so I think that we need, I don't know if Jessica needs a copy before we get, he signs, just for the record, just, so.
I would, I would, I would.
Oh, she's gonna mail it out then?
Is she gonna email it as well?
Yeah, can you scan it and, and, and just send a letter, can you scan it? If you want, you can send it to me and I'll send it to him, I think, just so we know, we have an electronic receipt.
Yep.
I saw it.
That's right.
This will be our number, just to show.
Well, let me get this wrong. Um, so we have any other, uh, a break second. Um, do we have other business that we wanna discuss, um, unknown? I know we have a copy of the budget calendar in here. As far as I know, the version of the budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, is still February's version? Is there a new version out there that I?
Oh, that, this one changed.
Okay.
That one page, we got it on the day. Okay, yeah, it says revise four twenty-four, but.
Okay.
Is the whole budget new, this might have just been asked and answered, and I apologize, is the whole proposed budget been uploaded yet?
No.
I know.
Well, as of yesterday, I don't know that since this is dated today, I didn't check today.
A lot of times there are changes on the day of the meeting, so it's always a, a tough thing to. I, I think we don't see the fifty, am I, we don't see the fifty thousand that are, are, because that would be under capital items, but we have fifty thousand dollars for the first half of our zoning box, so we figure it's gonna be, it's gonna be over two fiscal years.
Oh, perfect, right.
So, um, just 'cause it's a, so we'll have.
So that is in the, that I, that I said before, that is in there?
Yeah, it's under, in, in capital, um, and once we, once we get closer, I mean, I don't know what timing was, we might wanna think about doing an RFP, um, to get some quotes.
We did have.
Well, he, Bill got, Bill, Bill just got us some estimate, like, some basic, but we need actual RFPs. We have to issue an RFP and actually read the proposals and do the backgrounds and, and, and maybe interview whatever to kind of choose the right, right person for the job.
So as of July one, then you'd be able to sign the contract?
Yep.
True.
So, I don't know how long.
But we could do that preliminary prior to that, right?
How, 'cause, 'cause I, this, is it gonna be, I, I don't think we just need a quick update, I think this is gonna be one big project. And I, we hope that we can find somebody for just a hundred to, to do it, we don't, we just don't know. Um, we can always ask for more in the, in November.
Yeah.
Necessary, but I think, I don't know what timing was, maybe we should think about getting an RFP out soon, so we're kind of ready to go, so they have the, and we, we can kind of figure out the cost of the pair.
Yep, and, and really, he's been through that before. Candle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's that?
Uh, the new, so he's been through that before, maybe.
I mean, I know, he actually, I think he did the update, but by laws.
I, I think he assisted in it, as Mr. said, he did, he did a large part of it, but they did that also on the outside consultant side.
We definitely wanna bring in an outside, it's too big of a job for some of them.
And so the capital budget has fifty thousand?
The last time I saw it was fifty thousand, it's, it's not on this, but.
Okay.
Hope you have some pictures. And we can always ask for more at town meeting if we buy, but I think that, that should cover us for a little while.
Okay.
That's it? Anything that?
Okay, so the town meeting, Lauren, is that on your list of things to talk about?
Yes.
So, okay.
So, do we not have that timeline, again, that, that timeline that all the department heads got, that, that's about the, the timeline for the, for Warren articles and?
So this is what she said she had.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So, um, Jane and Jean went on a mission today to do some research about our timeline and, and, um, many people from town, you know, are, are reaching out saying, you kind of missed the deadline, you gotta, so they're getting nervous, so I wanna make sure that I follow up, and these guys went and they talked to me, and, um, I, I don't have, you can explain yourself, you don't need me to.
So the main date there is March eleventh, when the second closed the war, so all articles had to have been in prior to that date, which, which we did.
Good.
So all the articles were submitted in a timely fashion. And then, uh, you know, the planning board then goes on its own schedule, it's a public hearing process.
Okay, okay, so we just have to have the public hearing and a decision of, on each article prior to the town meeting?
Correct.
And even if it's the day before, if necessary.
There is no time? Correct, okay, yes, okay.
The pop, so I guess there may not be changes.
I was gonna say, can, can we make any changes to these at this point now?
We make, it looks like that if we make changes now, we would have to go and make these changes in the floor, which, um, I think it, it is such a sloppy way of doing it, um, but the email system broke again and, and I feel like, uh, the way it was against us, but it is what it is. So, um, I propose that whatever changes we make, we actually bring a stack for town meetings and make sure that a stack is there, so when people come in, they grab the new one, so there's no confusion. So they'll get their package and then we'll have the, you know, big red letters, these are, this is.
So you said we can't make changes?
We can't make changes to what they print and what they have, but if, but if we vote, like, on the solar, there's the, the max, and we say, well, we, it's thirty, and there is thirty, there's no way anybody's gonna be happy with that, we wanna make it thirty-five.
Good.
We would have to do it, print it, and just so, it's so much easier to have it and not to have.
And still do it on the floor to.
On the floor. So people can read it and understand it.
Yep.
Same thing with any of the marijuana, we want, we.
And we could probably put that on our website prior to.
But also have them available, just be during the parent's hearing, um, to make up for.
But it would be voted as an amendment to what's in the, the, accepted as.
Right, so when you're up. When one of us went up, I think that we can all speak on each one of them, then we can divide that task, it's so much fun to get up at the microphone. So we could go up there and do that, and then as, when we, when we say, this is what we wanna do, what you have in front of you was before public hearing, public hearing says we want, we, we believe that thirty-five is more reasonable because of such and such, just so they, they get it in layman's terms and it's, and it's.
It's easy to follow along when you have it in printing, too.
So, our first public hearing is the eighth?
The eighth, because Cosgrove, um, so, um, Bill reached out to Jonathan, um, and then Cosgrove.
Said it should be reposted in, maybe, in fourteen days.
So they, they had kind of different opinions, but Cosgrove had the most conservative opinion, that it really should be post, they should be advertised again and repost it to do everything completely right, so there's not any questions, and we decided to go with the most conservative, um.
So the eighth, and then it may continue on to the fifteenth, potentially, and that's why, okay.
And that'd be set up.
We do like the nine, the day after instead of waiting a week?
We could, I, I mean, we could do that, we could.
That would sort of.
Uh, that, that's fine, um.
'Cause I, I'm still hoping that the.
Yeah, I may not be able to make the night, but that's, that's fine, but that's fine, no, I don't, I, we've got a quorum anyways, but.
The, um, I'm still hoping that if there are any changes to the actual article, as long as it hasn't been printed yet, I believe we can make it on there, you know? We're just working under timeframes that, once it's printed, it's printed, and that's it.
Yep, yep, yep.
But if we can get it on, everything has been going so slowly, and we're not the only ones, um.
If there's one other concern, Ross, you have to recuse yourself on a couple of the, your one articles.
Yes, I do. Correct.
So that leaves four voting members. So if it's a two to two vote, then it's not a recommendation to town meeting, and since town meeting is within twenty-one days of the public hearing,
So we need it.
town meeting would not be able to take up, uh, the, our.
So if.
So we would have to just make sure that.
It's three to one or four to four zero.
We, we, we made sure that we, we.
Right, so that's the.
We.
Yes or no, it's.
So if, if, if this board does not recommend it, it can't go to town meeting, 'cause usually it just goes with a, with a.
No, no, we can, we can recommend it, we can recommend it, or we can not recommend it, but we have to vote on it and say, we like it, and we, we think how we do it.
Okay, so we, okay, so it's gonna be three four, or three against, it can't be, no hung jury's here, I got you.
Exactly.
So, so we might, so it might be something that some, a citizen sends to us before the twenty-one days, that it could just go directly to, it could go directly to town meeting without us having any say. But if, if it's within that twenty-one days, what kind of happened, and we, so now we're forced to vote on every single one of them.
Right, we have to vote on all the articles.
And I guess what the, and the discussion out, out there, um, is, oh, they're, they're saying, we, we wanna ban, and then they wanna increase it by three, and then they wanna, they wanna make all these changes, and, and, and I, and I think it's just about educating the public is we, I, I think as a board, we're, um, absolutely in the middle of the road, and we just want the residents to, um, vote and tell us what they want us to do. So if something comes to us, a ban or an increase, we want it to go in front of the residents, and so, I mean.
So it looks like we have two articles contradicting themselves.
Yes, but it's only because.
But it's because we want the people's time to vote on.
We would never, we just would never deny a citizen's petition, it's just not the right thing to do. So we would never not vote on it, just to not have it go, not go for it, just, it's just not, at least in my opinion, it wouldn't be the right thing to do.
So, so the problem is, is if, if we continue it to the ninth, I don't believe I can be here.
Okay.
Ross has to recuse himself, that leaves three of you, is that a quorum, is that?
Yes, can John vote?
No, because it's not a special permit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thanks for recognizing me. Just a quick question, that, that your board agreed to participate in, like, remote participation? I know if, if, you're not here, if you could call in, again, not putting you on the slot, but it's, I didn't know if you knew about it, or if you opted to. Because it's likely voted for, for the town to do it, but you, as a, all the individual boards and committees have to say, accept it as you wanna do.
And we can vote that just in case, I mean, it would be a reason to not just.
That's, that's fine, that's fine, I don't mind participating in one if I can.
If you, if you've never made a vote, an official vote, you should, you should do so, and then it's good till you vote afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's great, just in case we, you wanna, do we wanna make a motion to?
Do we wanna, so first of all, do we wanna schedule a meeting for the night also, just to, in case we need it?
Oh, I think if it's, if it's simplified things for the printing process, um.
That's right, that's the only reason I was thinking.
Um, we could certainly do the marijuana ones first, uh, we can make sure we put those first on what we do on the A, so they're done. Does that make sense? That way we don't have any, have an issue. Unless anybody, I, chime in, I'm, I'm.
That, that, that's fine, uh, we, I don't think this is an issue, we could, yeah. Uh, that that that's fine, uh, we, I don't think this is an issue, it's good, yeah, but.
But we should take up Karen's suggestion.
We should definitely have votes to do, um, remote participation.
Make a motion that we allow re remote participation in our meetings.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Is that?
One one more point, you might want to reach out to, um, the office to get, there are rules about participating, I think they're like a do-vote, roll call, all that.
Yeah.
We we have it, we always bring to all our meetings.
Will you send, will you, will you send an email?
Very specific procedures on doing it, how it's done, who can do it, who can't do it, when you can do it.
Will you send an email, it's on record, you guys have it handy, so will you just send an email to Mary and ask her if we could have a?
This is, it's like one sheet.
A co, just a copy that, a scan sheet or whatever, a photocopy, just so we have that.
Email that up.
Just so we all can review it and.
And then, does that have to be a video conference or can it be an audio?
Audio.
Just audio, audio only?
But you need a quorum of the members here.
Already here.
Yeah, you can't be the chair, it's all.
I think again, it's a roll call, oh, yeah, he'll say.
We might want to.
Well, I think we could, we could schedule a meeting now anyways and we can always cancel.
Schedule it, we can always cancel, we can always, definitely always.
You want to be on Skype?
Yeah, what's that?
You want to be on Skype?
Uh, recording's fine, I'm having some minor eye surgery, so I don't think I'm gonna want to come in that day, it's all.
That's fine.
You don't want to come in on the wrong.
No.
I mean, there's a very good chance that we'll get through all of our, all the Warren articles. On the, on the eighth anyways. But yeah, I would, we'll schedule the ninth, we may not even need to have it, I I have high hopes that we can get through all of these in one night.
No.
I may or may not be able to make the ninth, but my only concern, I can make the tenth, definitely, the ninth is ideal, I'll have to check tomorrow. So that's.
Yeah, let's, you know what, let's let's just do the fifteenth, I believe we'll get through it on the eighth.
Okay.
We'll put a copy.
All right.
I I I don't think, I know there's a lot of them, but I don't think.
Had to, we have the chair of the ZVA here, I don't know whether you want to.
No, I just, um, you know, I was thinking, I came in before you started your meeting and asked about the intervenor status regarding LNG. You had not opened your meeting and you had a quorum, so I wanted to make sure that I brought it in open meeting, so there would be no issues or anything like that, so. We discussed, uh, what you submitted to, uh, Department of Public Utilities, the zoning board of appeals.
You said it had to be after the meeting and, well, we had done it after the meeting, we, we did, it was a couple of weeks before we heard back.
It was a couple of weeks, yeah.
There's a new site.
We have not submitted for the new one though.
Mine just submitted it this week.
We have not.
Yeah, so I think I needed to submit it before so many days, within so many days after the public.
Do you, did you have to let them know what site and everything?
I just put the docket number on there.
So it, that, so will ours transfer over or will we need to do?
Is there a new docket?
I think we need to resubmit.
So so there might be a new docket number?
I have no, yeah, I don't know, I just I just sent out, because I have to send it by regular mail, it, and I had read it in in one of the, um. Uh, regulations, I wasn't sure whether or not you fill it like a, was there a requirement to fill out a separate affidavit or anything like that? And I didn't know, you know, I just kind of, you looked at the letter that you had submitted and I didn't use the same warning, but I, it was pretty brief.
Yeah, I think it's pretty much what.
Yeah.
What we did, just sent it the letter, asked for that status.
Right. Yeah, so, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, that it's, you know, with me and we discussed that, yeah.
And we can, we'll, we can chat again after the, after I do their presentation and it's not scheduled yet, right?
I don't see anything.
So when it, when it comes out, we can make sure that we, you may even want to send it in again within the docket.
Again, yeah, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna contact this, uh, the presiding officer of the council for that directly, to make sure that we cover all the bases.
And you've got the email, so you, so you've got the contact information, did you get the emails?
No, no, I just went on the website and looked at their filings.
I will, I just got an email today from the, from the, from the attorney, who's all the contact information on for the LNG, uh.
Sort of. Here's that one.
We switched contact, we're the official contact now.
So I can, I'll just forward you that email and it has everything, it should already be in there that you.
Okay, so if I need to contact them to become, uh.
Yeah, so you don't have to do any research, you don't have to look up anything, it's just in the contact information, the name and everything.
Right, right, yeah, so.
Hopefully that'll help you.
Yes, I don't, I can't see why they would deny either one of our boards' intervenor status. It looked like those other individuals that applied for, they they denied.
I think, they didn't, they, yeah, they didn't deny the individuals, but I I I don't, I mean, our boards, using the main boards that they're gonna see doesn't make any sense that they.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't. Right, right, yeah, I mean, they're asking for substantial.
And while we have you here, since under, under, um, other business, we haven't had a chance to really discuss about how, what we want to do, we want to do that energy committee and we, I, we went to get permission, but we didn't really, we commissioned to, um, to do, I, it. Fine, um, so do we have any ideas as of what, and and we print, what that setup should look like or, um, and that we can initiate the process, um?
Should definitely open it up to all the boards within within the town that want to be involved with it, with the board.
I mean, I think it's gonna make absolute sense to have it, to, you know, have.
With everybody on the same page.
Every board sending representative, and when it happens like these super long late meetings, you know. You know, maybe.
Everybody do a special reading for it.
You know, I was thinking maybe when, like, we, our meetings start at seven, we could do it, we could get it over six, one Wednesday a month until we get closer or something, so it's, just so we all get updated on a timely basis. There's a, there's a contact, so when new information comes out, every board gets the same information at the same time in all of the, all of the, again.
Are they, are they going to apply, are they going to, to write the site plan review, do you know?
So the discussion that we had was that they, that they would be more than willing to and they would also go through the, the, your, a ZVA hearing, um, to, for the waivers. That's what the initial.
For the old site.
For the old site, well, no, well, no, 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 so we were already, they already had other, well, we met, they had already talked, he, already talked about the new site and why they wanted the new site and all that, so we, we, it was, um, a good update and a ver- very, very positive, um, meeting.
Yeah, it was with the new site, yeah, also too.
Yeah, the new site.
Where, um, more, because they they want to make the community happy, they want to be good neighbors, want to go through things, um, and and pretty much what they do for us, they have to do for the state anyways, so it's only a matter of kind of showing up and they already have to have, you know, the same.
It's a formality.
Plans and the, the state looks the same stuff, I just think as a community, don't, certainly our residents, will will not appreciate if we went, gonna handle it, like they at.
Yeah, I I I, from what I've read, I didn't necessarily get that same feeling from some of the other petition, not from this company, but from other, I don't know if you've seen other DPU, uh, stuff over the years. But it, you know, depending upon what the project was with the Department of Public Utilities, I think, you know, my, my impression was is that if. The the local authority could make an agreement with them or take care of, you know, if they could do it on the local or before the state level, that they would prefer that and, um. In in some instances from some of the other hearings that I had read through, that, uh, that it what, it didn't always go that way and sometimes the DPU is scolding the petitioner for not being more involved with the local authorities, so. It seemed that they they do want more interaction between those two things, I don't think that they're just gonna say, well, whatever our town says, we'll just do, I don't, I don't, I don't see that necessarily.
No, I mean, it's like, they were very willing to come and and go through the process, um, how much true authority, um, can we go ahead and and and, I'm sure we can. But having a transparent process and, you know, having public hearings and having residents come and ask questions, it's different when you're in that big meeting with the big, you know, projector, you know what I'm like, situation, it's.
Yeah.
When you're this close and you're, and you can talk to the applicants one-on-one and ask questions, I think that is much more suitable, um, especially for the ones that are are be, are close to it.
Yeah.
And again, more than willing to to do it, and I, I have no reason to believe that that we weren't being told the truth, I mean, it it is seen.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's in their interest to do it anyways, because it's, if, whatever, there's, from the petition that I read, there's certain things that I don't think that either your board or I, our board could grant. Uh, we can't grant use variances, you guys can't do anything with uses either, uh, and there's some changes of uses that they're gonna need, so they're gonna need to have, if they're gonna put, build any c, in a, any one of those locations, I think they would need to have that petition to the DPU, but.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, right.
Yeah, but there's other things that I think fall under both your board and the zoning board of appeals that, uh, that they're asking for as well.
And they can run, you know, concurrently to get, you know, so it's not like they're waiting for one, they could do both together, so it's.
Right, right, yeah, so.
And. It, it, it's a new thing for us, we're all gonna, we're all gonna, um. Kind of go with the flow because we're kind of, you know, it's coming and we might as well be as in, involved as possible and we might, and we definitely want it as transparent as possible, so.
Right. Yeah.
And so the idea is to have all the, the boards, if they can, all send at least somebody to come and, you know, if, you know, uh. Board of Health has a particular question or issue that they're at the table and they're gonna go through us for hearings to make sure that we can ask that question, because maybe it isn't exactly in our purview, but sometimes the question just answered makes me.
Well, they, I don't even know if they would necessarily need in the Board of Health as much as conservation or.
Well, they probably, and I don't think they, they, but having them in the room just, just.
For questions.
Yeah.
Questions, because people from different, you know, they all, we all look at things in different way depending on what board we're on, so they have, again, they don't have to send anybody, but the invitation can go out, just send their representative, go figure out their date.
Right.
If they want to.
And and then the other question is residents, so, um, residents have reached out to say, you know, if you guys do this, we want to be, I want to be part, do we want to ask a couple of residents, if if, um, a, a limited number. To say, you can come to the meeting and let your, you know, we're a committee, we're gonna talk, we're gonna figure out, you know, suggestions and you might want to ask them, oh, can you do such and such, it may not be your requirement, but they may do it, you know, we want offense here because of whatever.
It's a part of the process, they may understand.
Especially those, especially those that were the in, requested be interveners, but were denied.
Yeah, so that.
Should they be interested in that, so.
Good, so we can, I mean, I, what, I I know I have, actually have messages, uh, even on Facebook for people who kind of have been interested, we can reach out, we can maybe even advertise, like two or three, I, we we just can't have twenty people and it it kind of takes away the. So does that seem.
You can put it on the town website.
I think at the end of the day. Um, and the, no matter how many people in the town that, you know, have comments or whatever, at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to primarily your board, if they're doing site plan review, to a certain extent, the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, to whatever zoning issues that we have, you know, my only concern, you know, we we are, and I'm not trying to be elitist by any means. But, you know, we are the permit printing authorities and, you know, that's why we're appointed or elected or anything like that, and I think probably worthwhile to have input, um.
I mean, I know we get the public hearing, so I'm not, I'm just, so the, one of the big problems that we have in this town, and and you guys can, you know, disagree with me, is that we all put out, this information comes out here and information comes out here. And depending on what source and where you look, you're getting, you're not getting, peop, even within our boards in this building, people have, are facts, we we all have different facts that don't agree sometimes. And having that representative and even having a couple of residents who also came to this meeting, who are also going back to their community, and these are active people, they're active on Facebook and Twitter and everything else, so the same message is getting out. So we have everybody, and it's, it's to make sure that this whole entire, this is a huge project, probably the biggest project this town will ever get. So we need to make sure, all the boards need to, this, the town hall needs to know what's going on.
But are are you attracting citizens that want to be part of the process, are you attracting opponents that want to stop the process?
I just.
Yeah.
That's correct.
That's, that's the only thing, what you're gonna get, what you're gonna get, opponents that aren't gonna budge either way.
Right.
This is, that. It goes back to Alicia or BBC, they should go there first, it's a major project, you should have a major project type of deal going, so you have a group of people from the town that are participating on this thing.
But this board for this particular, it's not really a board, it's just a committee, it has no powers.
We just a committee to me.
Yeah, but frankly, we don't have anything until you submit a plan and it starts going, then you can start the process.
But we want to be like, kind of proactive to kind of figure out what we're, what we're doing, um, so we can move ahead with some sort of plan and just, like to get.
Get informed, okay.
We don't, we don't need to have any residents, I just, again, look at, I mean, look at some other big projects and how they get, well.
My only concern would be if, if enough of us plan to go, let's say that they, we all just show up because we're interested that night, now we need to worry about posting it, which is fine, we can post every single one, but now, and to Frank's point, to Dawn's point, the people that are typically show up are typically the people who don't necessarily want it, they're the ones who don't want it. And what they can do is, and I love the idea, I just, I think we need to make, be careful how we handle it, because you could have a four-hour meeting and get absolutely nothing accomplished and only have people complain.
So we have, we're, so we run it as boards and we take and we take minutes and the chair and doesn't, I don't.
You guys have, if you were gonna point, well, I don't think that the zoning board has any power to form a committee, because we're appointed, you guys is elected, I think, that's what I'm understanding.
Right, that's, that's right.
So we could say, I mean, honestly, if we had a citizen that came up here and they hated it so much that they just, we would have the ability to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, look at the, how late meetings ran for, um, five oh eight, look at how late they ran for VGG, look at how late they ran, when you have people that are.
Those are, but we're not having, these, these are, these are informational, informational, that this is what's going on.
I.
The same thing can happen.
You and I know that, but, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, you run the state, yeah, you run the danger, yeah.
Because, and then you try to control it, you try to say, okay, we only want to hear fresh ideas, and then someone stands up and says, I just have fifty bajillion more things to say, and then you don't sit down, and it just, unfortunately, unless you're gonna strong arm, and I'm not, I I'm glad people show up, I'm glad they have their opinions, I I learn something more from people. I just think, you just have to be careful and you have to be willing to egg timer it, if you will, if you think you're gonna run into that.
We're not dealing, again, we're dealing with committee members, we can screen our committee members, but we can't just only have people in this room that love this project either.
No, 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 of course not.
So it's, I mean, that's not fair either, we, and we want tough questions to be answered?
I don't think anyone, yeah. Well, I don't think anyone loves it, but I think that sitting in these seats, what we vowed to do, because we get elected to be here, is whether you love it or hate it, you fa, you play, you play fair, you listen fairly, you vote fairly, you have the best information, because you can ask anything you want. And so you need people that are going to do that, whether they love it or hate it, are still going to play fair, are still gonna think clearly, because they're gonna take their own emotion off and they're going to just go factual.
So are you, so we had an amazing solar committee and they met and they did their things, there were a mix between private citizens and 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 board members and they were there for a year, they met.
Okay.
And they came up with with a, a zoning bylaw that is super high quality, um, there were people in that, in those meetings that absolutely hated, won't start naming names, that absolutely ha- ha- hated solar. They managed to come up with a zoning bylaw that didn't destroy everything, so, do you, do you understand how that kind of?
But it is definitely swayed anti-solar, the solar committee is definitely anti-solar, there there, there's no question that they are not for solar. So, yeah, you had a group of people that came together, and I I don't mean this to be so argumentative, I I love the idea of having a committee, I just, there there's an agenda on the solar committee and that is, they agreed to limit it, because I don't, I think they realized that completely banning it wasn't going to work forever. And so again, where we won't have any voting authority for that, I think that, yeah, you're right, just screen the people and it, you don't want to tell anybody no either, and that's the hard part, is if someone truly wants to be there, there should be a lot of voice, we just want to make sure it doesn't get out of control.
Well, the, I mean, we al, we also will have public hearings.
Yes, that's totally, very.
This is just, again, this is just to make sure that the inter, we, this town hall does a very bad job of sharing information.
Ah, people pretty, I mean, but it is, it's not just the town hall, it's people, people hear things, people repeat things, people.
No, it's the. The, no, 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 make correct, the town hall releases information when they feel like it's a good idea to release information and everybody's doing something different. And the town is going, it it, it's, it's not okay, and the committee, and the reason why I wanted it, because this is a huge project and we want to make sure that every board is getting the same exact information, that's it.
You just, so the purpose of this committee is to make sure that every board is getting the same information, so why not limit it to just boards?
Boards, exactly. Exactly.
We got it, where, there is a public hearing process where the public can intervene, if this is the purpose, to keep all the boards, keep the town hall on the same page and and all together.
Well, I'd obviously, well, I just obviously love our residents much more than you guys.
Yeah, I think it was, I think.
Well, no, I I I do, I do, but but that's.
Part of the, you know, part of the thing is that we don't really know.
I I know what you're saying. So what about the couple of residents that we have that actually work in the industry and stuff that have reached out and said, hey, I I see this, I do this for a living and I have a lot of insight or, so.
Okay, if, if, well.
Do you want to, so that's what I was trying to bring in, because I know nothing about LNG, the the conversation that I had with the, he's the vice president, uh, I remember who, who's.
But how do you select?
Um, that was, I learned and then I did some reading on the side and think I'm like a pro- like knowing the industry and knowing um what other standards are are out there. Again, we already have all the guidelines, the state and federal guidelines, but knowing all, you know, this, this tends to be a question that everybody has, we, I I've seen it before, let's address it or. I mean, not not necessarily, again, the whole point was, we wanna make sure that information gets to the public and it's and it's, it's all the information and it's accurate information.
So I would caution you of about openly requesting members to come in, but if you have an expert that you think could add something.
Well, I mean, that you vetted.
To the 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 whole process, having them as a member, I can understand.
My only caution would be if you're putting them on as an expert, making sure you're vetting them, making sure that you're checking their references, making sure, cause I can come in and say that I'm a solar expert.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's not what, but that's not what I, but I.
I I totally can hear what you're saying, I just.
I'm, I wanna bring them in as, so we had people that that have all sorts of, during the whole VGG plus, we had engineers that found things that our engineers missed.
Yes, I agree. Correct. That's correct.
So that's my, this, this.
But that was just part of the public hearing.
Right, right, that's true.
But they came up, but it shouldn't have probably come up during the middle of a public hearing, that that kinda made it.
But in all fairness, we never had our engineers inspect any of the stuff that the engineers who stood up claimed to say, so I I'm only cautious in that.
Oh, no, no, they they were definitely um catch basins that.
That's a couple of.
There were some things that.
Oh, no, there were definitely things, I just, I go back to, that's what public hearings are for, and that way it's equal access to everybody who wants to speak. We're not cherry picking the people we want on the committee, we're saying it's boards on the committee, public hearing, have at it, if you wanna come in, good, bad and different, you hate us, you love us, speak, we'll give you plenty of time.
Sorry.
So egg timers for.
Well, I mean.
But I I think this should happen way before it even gets here though, I mean, back to Alicia, you should have a a major proj- if you have a major project, you should go through the EDC. You should be like, we're gonna post, we're going to the library, we're gonna have a public hearing, have, drag them in there, so everybody's up, so by the time it gets to us.
Yep.
So you're saying that should be part of EDC's responsibility?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I know if VGG did that, they had their big public hearing, there was three, two other ones, they took it upon themselves, exactly, they served food and they invited people and said, we'll take all public commentary, we wanna hear what you have to say.
Yeah, yeah. They had pizza. Yeah, yeah.
And the EDC could encourage that, we can't make them do anything, but we can absolutely encourage that and whether they do it or not.
Yeah.
Or didn't um.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, you know, the problem is this, is that at the end of the day, you know, how much.
Yeah, well, the emergency lighting, maybe the first one, but the second one.
At the, at the end of the day, in in terms of their petition for zoning exemptions and and some of the exemptions from site plan review, you know, how much is that going to help? You know, if if this company is going into into build there, does it help your board, does it, you know, what, help our board in terms of zoning or whatever? Or, you know, conservation, you know, and I am and probably at this point, we really don't know what a lot of the issues are gonna be with this, you know what I mean?
No.
Cause I don't even think that they necessarily have a finalized plan or anything, from what I've read, so.
They've chosen their location and that's it.
Yeah.
But Alicia would give the public knowledge to, I mean, I don't think it's our our purview to be the signpost and say, hey, I mean, you do, we do have the public meeting when it's concerned, where we have a plan and something.
That's exactly right.
You know, my my thinking was is that, you know, to the extent that that our board has the authority to impose zoning conditions i- if they make sense in 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 a feasible. Um, you know, for the town, then you do that, the the thing is, is that what information is the, what we need in order to really assess what conditions under zoning they would need to do? And that's why I was thinking that, you know, understanding what some of the other boards, you know, you're looking at the, not even just boards, in DPU, the fire department, the police department.
But isn't it nice to have the informal session in having, you know, then, cause they'll send up a representative, they've already said that they do wanna do that.
Right.
And for us to have this gen- this this general, those kinda general sessions, but we've been, we've been a meeting for it, yeah.
Just to have understand, cause some of those things you may wanna include in site plan, and some of those things maybe is allowed under the zoning, uh, you know, statutes for us to impose. You know, condition if there, we think that there is a public safety or a health issue involved, uh, that's allowed under the statute to do, so, but I don't necessarily know.
But they'll come in and we'll be looking at, they'll be, we'll be looking at their, you know, stormwater management and.
Right.
So it'll be, it'll.
Or is it a tech, I mean, if everybody, if if it's just a commi- if it's not a quorum, if it's just one person from each board.
I mean, so so we would, as a board, we would look at like stormwater management, but as a committee, we would look at the process and and upfront say, what do we want them to do in this? What do, what do we want them to do for, so our, our job as a committee would be.
What's the bigger picture, what do we need them to do?
Right, so our job as a committee would say, well, what do we want them to do with the project, what should they, so they drew in their presentation at the library because they, because they have to, but what else do we want? Do we, do we want them to have, you know, a little, a a another mini session, or do we want them to do a little presentation on something that's really worrying and bring in extra, oh, just something that.
That presentation at the library is only one out of many hearings, correct? Is that how it works?
Right, well, if they have to do that.
It's only one hearing locally, the rest are in Boston.
The rest are in Boston, but they have additional hearings to decide whether or not they're gonna grant the exemptions that they see.
Yeah.
You know, do we, does our committee wanna send, does one of, some, one person from our committee and they, can they go to the one hearing in Boston and come back and report back, so on a, on a committee level? So we all kinda know what's going on, there'll be minutes and everything after or, I'm just saying, the things that we can do to make sure that 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 it's a smooth process, and I'm not talking, we know.
Yeah.
Yes, the planning board is an elected board, so we can, we can kinda say, let's create this committee, but again, and I hate to use VGG as an example, it was so messy. I felt like the, we didn't get any board of health comments in time, we were supposed to get them within forty-five days, but there was some cutoff there and we're kind of saying, help us everybody and. And everybody was kinda, we were, there's such a disconnect, and I thought that having everybody in the room, whether it's residents or not, I just thought some, some residents would give them, they have, they they don't trust this town hall at all. And I thought having a couple of locals will make everybody feel better, but again, that's, again, that's, we can de- decide that later. Um, we wanna make sure that the process, that everything is just done transparent, and there might be things that. As a board, we can think of, they, they, maybe they should meet with these, like maybe, but as a board and well, you have all, you have all, you know, this diverse group of people that can kinda say, well, wouldn't it be nice if they, they figured out that first? And maybe not, maybe we would, we would have, you know, we would schedule one hour meeting and we only need fifteen minutes for a quick update, who knows, I'm just saying. Just to make sure that there is an oversight to to follow the process.
I know we're kinda behind the eight on this, because it's already out, the town of Brookline has a major projects division or just like the EDC. So, when a pro- say it's a over a certain dollar amount, and as you said, there's, there's a group of people representing each passit of.
So on the EDC, there's like somebody from the planning board, somebody from all of this.
Yeah. So they go in there and and they have, which we don't have, of course, but they have the right act of what is expected of them, what it, what problems or pitfalls. Some of the, some of the zoning variances, or something they need to to hear to, to make their su- their project successful, and then they work, work that.
That's great.
This, this is, they not have any actual applicant, you know, this is just amongst the boards, it's a public, yeah.
No. Well, the applicant comes in with their plan, so not with their suggestion of a plan, so, no, nothing can really be done until they submit a plan to the, to the, to the.
Yeah, but there is, but they have a kind of like a, a concept plan.
Yeah.
And it's before they come in and start plopping down plans, they're, like, the process could already be, this is, this is our potential timeline, this is, we could just set, we could just.
Sure.
Have ex- those expectations are exactly right and.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's just something to eliminate when it comes to here, to eliminate the consternation that that follows, you know.
Exactly. Right.
The town might wanna consider such a process.
I think it's a great idea.
For these kinds of big projects to get multiple department input into, to these plans.
Uh-huh.
Maybe, you know, maybe you guys haven't, just having a committee with the boards and the departments to kind of figure out what, cause in my mind, that. With the, uh, the petition under forty-eight, chapter three, they could essentially, they could come in to give us a song and dance, go back to the board, go back to the state and bypass everything.
Exactly.
Right.
And, and that's it.
But when they're willing to do, but when they're willing to do it, let's not embarrass ourselves and be and be all messed up, and let's do.
Yeah, I think we should, cause we would not, we, it it may come down, they may, if they give us the song and dance, we're gonna have to go to the state and we're gonna have to fight for, for that with with the state. And that might mean that we have to have counsel, yeah, and, you know, in, uh, you know, for all of us.
Right.
But it's probably worth it for us to try to figure out what some of the problems and issues are gonna be, and and what needs to be incorporated in the York board, what can be incorporated into our board? Or if there's other boards that they need to go and see versus having.
Maybe they don't need to see conservation, but maybe it would be really great to have conservation, at least Todd come in here to really guide us on to, just, just so we could be.
What he would like to see.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there are some issues on that.
But I, so we don't, so the thing is, I don't, we don't know all those issues, so it's gonna be great to know what all of our roles will be and just, just that one subject, what is all, what are our, well, uh.
Right, cause.
Can we make sure that all the boards share things, so when, as one board makes a decision, or if there's a timeline on something and everybody knows and they, you know, there, there's no, there's nothing.
Right.
And that's again, for the, the actual. Um, makeup of the committee, that, what, what, again, I was saying, the residents don't trust us at all right now, and I thought that bringing a couple in, especially some of the, the vocal ones.
But I don't think that would make so much of a difference, cause everything you're gonna do is gonna be an open meeting, so.
So they could, they could.
They can be there.
And whether we want a video or just audio, whatever.
So the, is the committee gonna meet in open meeting too, is, or, that that has to be an open meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, I would imagine so, why would you do anything not in open meetings?
No, it doesn't have to be open, we can, we can determine whether we want it to be a, an official meeting and make it open, because we're not gonna have quorum, right? So we, we, or I guess we could have.
So an ad hoc committee made up of board members to discuss issues and and come together as boards to keep everybody on the same page.
Perfect.
Why would you not wanna do it in an open meeting?
Oh, definitely, definitely you could, no, definitely, definitely you should.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying that's, that's just an option.
No reason not to.
If that committee.
If the planning board creates a committee, that's a public body, you know, for, so it's still.
Okay, so if, if, if that committee feels that they have a citizen that could add something to it and and be part of the process, by invitation, invite them into the board, but I think.
If if we, a full commit, right. It shouldn't be advertised, it's gonna be.
Let the committee, let the committee decide that, let the committee decide.
So we will send out, just, I mean, it doesn't have to be on tomorrow, but we'll send out an email and we'll sh- we'll hit all, all the department heads and say, we talked to your board and maybe one person can be, does, it doesn't have to be one specific, like.
Correct.
We'll kinda figure out what works, I mean, I, I mean, I always say, because it's Wednesdays and we're here, we could, we could, this is a big room to meet in, we could do it before our planning.
Right.
Board meeting, if it works, or we can see what works for kind of everybody, um, just to kinda get everybody on the same page, and I'm not saying, and maybe once a month, just so we all.
Oh, sure.
Can get, kinda get some ground rules, right, you know, will, everybody, when something happens, everybody get it out there.
Everybody hears the same information, so they, the telephone.
Well, yeah, you know, the thing is that they're gonna go to the police department, tell the police department one thing, and fire department, they're gonna need to do something with, it would make, you're right, it would make sense if we all kinda knew what everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the same page, yeah.
Yeah, what what everyone needed and what everyone asked for, so.
Yeah, we learned the hard way on a recent project, how they could tell you one thing in the beginning and then at the end do something totally different, and unfortunately, every committee wasn't hearing the same things at the same time.
Right.
So, I love the idea of an ad hoc.
So we just wanna get, we wanna learn from what we did wrong, and we wanna do it right, and this is a good chance to kinda prepare, um, and and I'm sure we won't do everything perfect.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
But keep everybody in the loop with the, with the facts of what's going on.
Yeah, that's it.
Do we wanna send a letter out to the boards and ask them if they wanna be part of it?
Yeah, so we wanna send it, probably, probably sending an invitation to all the boards and ask them if they, um, if they would be interested, and they're welcome to send somebody from their.
Send a delegate.
Liquid gas ad hoc committee.
Police and fire department too.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Uh, police and fire, you, we, and app, and say that we wanna, we, we, we're, we're forming a committee, um, I'll come up, we'll come up some really good wording, ju- just to make, it would, it's really informational.
Sure, sure.
Um, to keep everybody, you know, updated, um, make sure that, you know, everybody ha- kind of is part of the decision-making process, even if it formally comes to our two boards, that they're in and they're adding.
Yep.
They're, they're adding their expertise to make sure that we do, um.
Because we have to go to the DPU and we're gonna, and we have to, they, they say, well, we're not doing any of this stuff, we don't care, then we're gonna have to go to the DPU and know we're fighting, like we have, these are the things that we.
And say, well, like, say, we, this is the conservation issue, this is the, this is the.
These are the things that we want, this is what we want, yeah.
Exactly.
This is why you support.
They need some sort of oversight and it's.
It may not, it may not be that way, it might be fine, it might be absolutely.
And it might be a slow play, but we'll be per- we'll be prepared.
You'll be correct, and the nice thing too, is that there might be an energy expert on one of these boards that wouldn't normally have a voice, because we have the voice, but could lend a great amount of advice.
Yeah, you guys have.
Um, and help us out immensely.
Moving forward, then, when you have another project that come, at least you have some momentum, you're ready base on, how to get a, yeah, process, it get, it'll just get better.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so, so process and, and.
And.
Even if, even if you're showing up for this meeting and you're hearing the update, or if somebody went to Boston, cause we will get minutes, but instead, you know, this is what we could, just. It doesn't have to be anything where we're, we're all, you know, reviewing plants and then like, it's all about, you know, the the process, especially at first.
Exactly. Yeah. The.
A- as an intervener, we have the, if you're, well, if you guys are the intervening, you have the, but you also have the power to, you know.
We have a responsibility. To call witnesses.
To call witnesses, to present briefs, to question witnesses and anything like that, and, you know, who knows if they'll actually need that or not.
And that might be a good purpose of of the, this committee too, to, instead of sending six people to to Boston, if, you know.
Only, all right, I mean, right now, only, only your board can do it right now.
Right now, but but your board is applying, select board is probably.
Yeah. I honestly want the selectmen, I'd like them all.
Well, I thought they were, you know.
So there might be a designated, I mean, they might now.
As I say, the Southbridge select board is.
They're changing their whole, I mean, they're changing, so they might now, so there might be three boards.
I don't think they thought of it, that's what, the first time, they didn't, it didn't occur to them.
Yeah, but if you guys didn't file as an intervener, they would've just, they would've just come right in and they're gonna do whatever, and 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 no one in the town would've had a say on that.
No, that's all, nobody would. Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
It was actually your idea to to file.
Yeah, I was the only one at the meeting, the other meetings that were going on that, that's, I was the only one that heard that.
Well, and that's, it represents a great point though, is that I, as a citizen, wouldn't know to file as an intervener, I know.
I didn't know until you, until I read the thing and then I started talking to you guys, I'm like, hey, you know, there's a lot of zoning issues in this that they're asking for.
So we'll leave this with, we'll send an email and get everybody's, everybody can, um, speak.
Great job done. Yep.
Everybody can add, they can, we can figure out what time, date, again, I'm always partial to Wednesday because I.
You're here.
But, um, whatever works and we're not, nothing like so very formal, we'll need to either audio or we'll need to, you know, have minutes.
Some work. Sure.
Um, cause that is the most transparent, they can be open, but we could, once we get a group of people together, we can sit and vote and 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 deal with all of those, those details.
Diligently.
Um, I think the, the plate in my head seems much simp- more simple than it actually is.
It's like two by hours.
Yeah, like, but again, the the whole, the main purpose is to, is to keep everybody with all, with all of the information, having all the information available.
Right.
To everybody, including the general public.
Yep.
Um, and all of us ha- having the same real true facts.
And Charlie, this has been great at reposting things, so I'm sure they'll get the information out there as it comes down.
And we will, and we'll talk about, you know, maybe having a committee Facebook page and a committee Twitter account where the, these are our minutes, this is what the, the. Because I see that the, the emergency building, the one that we do is, they do great at that.
Yes.
Even I keep up that way, so maybe that's something that, um, we can think about too.
Yeah. Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile for, this is a big enough project, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That, uh.
And people are scared of it.
Yeah.
And but they don't under, they don't, um, even I didn't know until we sat, you know, what's, what, one of the big actual safety issues and stuff, it's, it's so much different than you picture in your head. Um, when you start hearing the facts, so I think just make, you know, letting the public, don't, they're not just gonna get this giant plant that's gonna blow up on them.
Right.
Um, is a good place to.
Great place to start.
At at some point, I don't think initially this is necessarily worthwhile, but depending upon what some of the issues might be, um, since it is pretty close to Southbridge. You know, may, we may wanna talk to the ch- police chief or the fire chief or, depending on what that is, for sure they have some.
Well, they have, there's a training, so, so, um, everybody has to pay for tr- uh, special training for the plus.
And the fire.
The fire and the local hospitals for, for, I guess, the chemical burn, that, that, that company, so it's, so.
Yeah. Right. Right, but it's gonna impact their town somewhat as well.
But I was really surprised to hear that, that they actually send the hospitals for training.
Not that we have to listen to anything that Southbridge says.
Right, no, but.
They don't listen to us, so.
But, you know.
But no, it's, it's better to work together and and, and if, and if we have a Southbridge, you know, fire chief saying, you know, bringing a good point, then we would, but, you know, let, let, the more the.
Right, it's close to the line. And I'm sure that those departments get along.
Oh, I'm sure. Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
We can trade information for a beaver dammer.
Open up a road.
Yeah. Sell some of the dump load, like, maybe you guys can sell some of that.
Thanks, Frank.
Oh, sorry to take all your time over tonight, yeah, so just let us know, and I appreciate, yeah, send an email, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No.
And we'll send out an email, and, awesome.
You guys have a good night, I hope, I was gonna kill me.
Um, so, is there anything else we wanna, we, we are, we can adjourn, and then only come back for, uh, back to close out our regular session?
Local...
We wanna do an executive session?
Close the executive session.
Make a motion that we adjourn to go into executive session?
Only to go out to...
Only to come out to adjourn the...
The chairman needs to, uh, describe the reason why we're going to executive session.
So, um, we, uh, we're adjourning and, and go, go into an executive session, um, um, we need a motion to enter an executive session under MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, and discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation decisions on the public body, it, and the chair so declares, um, so we need a little call.
Second. Don, click.
Alicia Duke.
Rosalyn. Rosalyn Mansky.
Jane Vincent, yes.